Friends and those in the audience, to please silence your phones and electronic devices, please. Thank you. I'd also like to ask if we all could be respectful to each other and do not disrupt the meeting while you are here. If you are disruptive, you will be asked to leave, and if you fear to comply, you will be escorted out. Please also note that according to Boston City Council rules, that there are no signs allowed in the chamber. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roles to ascertain the presence of a quorum? Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker,
Here.
Counselor Bock,
Present.
Counselor Braden,
Here.
Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Flaherty,
Here.
Counselor Flynn,
Here.
Counselor Lara, Counselor Louie Jean, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy,
Here.
And Counselor Worrell,
Here.
Mr. President, a quorum is present. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Louie Jean is working.
Counselor Louie Jean is marked as present as well. Today's introduction of clergy is from City Council Aaron Murphy and its Reverend Wayne Daly. Counselor Murphy, will you please come to the podium and introduce today's prayer?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Council President Flynn. So it is my honor today to welcome Reverend Wayne S. Daly back to the city council. When I invited him last week, he told me he has made an appearance here before. Then Counselor Wu had invited him, so we're happy to have you back. Reverend Wayne Daly was born in the West Indies, and since arriving in America, Reverend Daly has accumulated 12 years of management experience, 16 years in the insurance industry, and eight years in the U.S. military. Reverend Daly is an active participant in our neighborhoods and faith groups. He was the re-entry coordinator in a program of the Suffolk County Sheriff's Department, the community relations director, and organized the informational breakfast meetings of city leaders to collaborate and address citywide concerns. Recently, Reverend Daly was appointed by Mayor Wu to the Boston Police Accountability and Transparency Civilian Review Board. He now serves as the Deputy Director of Community Engagement for the Suffolk County District Attorney's Office. Reverend Daly has dedicated his work to helping others, no matter their situation, and I applaud all he has done and will continue to do for our city and all of its residents. So without further ado, it is my honor to welcome back Reverend Daly to the city council.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy, to Counselor Flynn, and to all of the elected officials here, to our clergy who might be present in this space. Let us just take a moment to just take a deep breath and exhale, for we have all come here on one accord and unity to work together. For our work is not for ourselves. Our work is to serve the people. And when we have division amongst ourselves, we hurt the people. Let us pray. God, I bring you into this space, the God who's known by many names, Allah, Elohim, Yahweh. We bring you into this space that you may fill it and fill our hearts, as we have come to do your work. You have told us, oh God, you require of us to work justly, to work with love, and to walk humbly with you, God, and to always do what is right. So, God, we thank you for each person here. We pray, oh God, that everything that is done in this space, a space that was formless and you breathed life into it, as you have breathed life into us, for all faiths that is here, that you have brought together collectively to do your work. Forgive us of anything that we have done by thought, word, and deed against you, Lord. Have your way now. In Jesus' name we pray, and for His sake most holy God, amen.
Amen.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance at this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Clerk, please let the record reflect that Counselor Arroyo and Counselor Lara We're on to the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing, no objection. The chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Communications from her on of the mayor. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docet 1017, please?
Document number 1017, message in order for your approval, a home rule petition to the general court entitled "Petition for a Special Law Regarding An Act Authorizing the City of Boston to Establish Fossil Fuel-Free Standards for New Construction in Major Renovation
Thank you. Docet 01001017, we refer to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docet 1018, please?
Document number 1018, message in order authorizing the city of Boston acting through its mayor's office of housing to apply for and to accept and expend the federal fiscal year 2022 continuum of grant, continuum of care grant funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount not to exceed $45 million. These funds will be used to support programs that provide services and housing to persons experiencing homelessness.
Thank you. 1018 will refer to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 10191020, together, please.
Document number 1019, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $3,450,000 in the form of a grant from the fiscal year '23 Safe and Successful Youth Initiative awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Health and Human Services, to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund a comprehensive interagency strategy that connect law enforcement, employment, education, public health, and youth development agencies to reduce youth violence in the Commonwealth. And document number 1020, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $950,000 in the form of a grant for the securing the city's continuation awarded by the United States Department of Homeland Security, to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund continued enhancement for regional capabilities to detect, identify, report, and interdict nuclear and other radioactive materials out of regulatory control and provide regional training and exercise opportunities necessary to enhance regional capabilities.
Thank you, Docet 10191020. We refer to the Committee on Public Safety, Criminal Justice, Reports of Public Offices and Others. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 1021 to 1031, together.
Document number 1021, communication was received from City Council President Flynn regarding temporary readjusted committee assignments for the next 60 days. Document number 1022, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Michael Cox as Commissioner of the Boston Police Department. Document number 1023, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Ashley Groffenberger as Chief Financial Officer and Collector Treasurer of the City of Boston. Document number 1024, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Carmel Valentine as a member of the Human Rights Commission for a term expiring December 1st, 2025. Document number 1025, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Elijah Evans as a member of the Human Rights Commission for a term expiring December 1st, 2025. Document number 1026, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Mario Paredes as a member of the Human Rights Commission for a term expiring December 1st, 2025. Document number 1027, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the application for the report and decision on the Second Amendment to the Report and Decision on City Square Elderly Chapter 121A Project. Document number 1028, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the application for the Report and Decision on the Tenth Amendment to the Report and Decision on Orchard Park Revitalization, Chapter 121A Project. Document number 1029, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the application for the Report and Decision on the First Amendment to the Report and Decision on the Old Colony Phase 4, Chapter 121A Project. Document number 1030, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor and papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of August 10th, 2022. And document number 1031, notice was received from the mayor of her absence from the city from Sunday, August 28th, 2022, at 8:00 a.m. until Sunday, September 4th, 2022, at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you. Docet 1021 through 1031 will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0458, 0510, 0955 through 0960, together.
Document number 0458, the Committee on Government Operations to which we referred on March 30th, 2022. Document number 0458, petition for a special law relative to an act regarding the disability pension for Ilana McAllister submits a report recommending that the home rule petition ought to pass in a new draft. Document number 0510, the Committee on Government Operations to which was referred on April 13, 2022. Document number 0510, petition for a special law relative to an act regarding the disability pension for Kurt Stokinger submits a report recommending the home rule petition ought to pass in a new draft. Document number 0955, the Committee on Government Operations to which was referred on August 10th, 2022. Document number 0955, order for a home rule petition regarding the disability pension for Matthew Morris submits a report recommending the home rule petition ought to pass in a new draft. Document number 0956, the Committee on Government Operations to which was referred on August 10th, 2022. Document number 0956, petition for a special law relative to an act regarding the disability pension for Harry Jean submits a report recommending that the home rule petition ought to pass in a new draft. Document number 0957, the Committee on Government Operations to which was referred on August 10th, 2022. Document number 0957, order for a home rule petition regarding the disability pension for Terry Cotton submits a report recommending that the home rule petition ought to pass in a new draft. Document number 0958, the Committee on Government Operations to which was referred on August 10th, 2022. Document number 0958, order for a home rule petition regarding the disability pension for Ryan Laney submits a report recommending that the home rule petition ought to pass in a new draft. Document number 0959, the Committee on Government Operations to which was referred on August 10th, 2022. Document number 0959, order for a home rule petition regarding the disability pension for Scott O'Brien submits a report recommending that the home rule petition ought to pass in a new draft. And document number 0960, the Committee on Government Operations to which was referred on August 10th, 2022. Document number 0960, order for a home rule petition regarding the disability pension for Richard Santolo submits a report recommending that the home rule petition ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Louie Jean, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Counselor Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. This hearing was held, I believe, last week, then Chair Arroyo asked if I could chair this hearing, and I was unable to, and I believe it was Counselor Flaherty that chaired this meeting, so I'll be brief here. Technically, these are all home rule petitions that have been previously heard by this council. They were sent up to the State House, and they were sent back upon review by the State Retirement Board, by the Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission with slight changes that address some technicalities involved in the home rule petitions that we sent up. All of these changes have been made, and all of these home rule petitions had multiple hearings before this body, so I'm going to recommend that these home rule petitions pass, but I'm also going to pass it to Counsel Flaherty to give more detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Louie Jean. The chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to our colleague, Counselor Louie Jean. I chaired the working session on October and August 24th, and as referenced, during the working session, we heard from administration officials, particularly Kerry Nero from Workers Comp and also Christine Ware, executive officer of the Boston Retirement Board. During the working session, the committee made changes to Docet 0458 to reflect Chapter 152 of the Mass General Laws so that they were rightfully applied. This include language additions, which would allow all reasonable, necessary, and related medical treatment arising out of the July 10th, 2019 work injury to be paid by for the city of Boston, including treatment after the date of her retirement. Additionally, with respect to Docets 0458 through and 0510, they were amended to allow annual earnings up to one-half the amount of retirement allowance without refund penalty and 80% compensation upon attaining the mandatory retirement age. As for Docet 0955 through Docet 0960, they were refiled because when they were sent up to the State House, they required legislative changes, legislative language changes. The committee resolved these outstanding issues by changing, quote, "date of injury," end quote, to, quote, "upon retirement," end quote, in certain clauses which was required. Passage of these dockets will ensure that police officers and emergency medical technicians are allowed to receive their full compensation had they continued serving as first responders. And as serving as the chair during those matters, I recommend the dockets ought to pass, but in a new draft, but would also through the chair recognize the efforts of our colleague, City Council Aaron Murphy, for doing a lot of the heavy lifting and blocking tackling in the refile process for these eight very deserving individuals for the city of Boston. Any further comment through the chair to Counsel Murphy, I'll defer to the chair. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. The chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you, Chair Louie Jean, and also Counselor Flaherty for cheering last week's working session. Just for clarification, seven of these, the police officers, Richard Santola, Matt Morris, Scott O'Brien, Ryan Laney, Terry Cotton, and Harry Jean were all filed last council session by former Counselor Anissa Asabi George, and our former colleague Counselor Edwards filed Alaina McAllister, the EMS. And thank you to Council President Flynn and Counsel Flaherty, who co-sponsored when we filed the retirement for Kurt Stokinger. So I am also speaking today in support of the home rule petitions relative to these seven individual police officers and one emergency medical service official, and I'm also asking that my city council colleagues show their support with these new drafts that better fit the state language. My office has been working a lot with State Representative Dan Hunt at the State House. Also, Counselor Flaherty mentioned, we've been working with our retirement board, the Commissioner Christine Ware, to make sure that this language matched and was consistent with other cities and towns who are also filing these retirement for disabled first responders. So I ask that my colleagues pass these home rule petitions so that these deserving first responders can move on with their life, spend months, and I think it's fitting that today we vote to send this up to the State House, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. We're going to take a vote now on each of these dockets separately. Counselor Flaherty seeks acceptance of the committee report in a new draft in passage of Docet 0458. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Docet 0458 has passed in a new draft. Counsel Flaherty seeks acceptance of the committee report in a new draft in passage of Docet 0510. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Docet 0510 has passed in a new draft. Counsel Flaherty seeks acceptance of the committee report in a new draft in passage of Docet 0955. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Docet 0955 has passed in a new draft. Counsel Flaherty seeks acceptance of the committee report in a new draft in passage of Docet 0956. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Docet 0956 has passed in a new draft. Counsel Flaherty seeks acceptance of the committee report in a new draft in passage of Docet 0957. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Docet 0957 has passed in a new draft. Counsel Flaherty seeks acceptance of the committee report in a new draft in passage of Docet 0958. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Docet 0958 has passed in a new draft. Counsel Flaherty seeks acceptance of the committee report in a new draft in passage of Docet 0959. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Docet 0959 has passed in a new draft, and Counsel Louie Jean seeks acceptance of the committee report in a new draft, passage of Docet 0960. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Docet 0960 has passed in a new draft. We're going on to matters recently heard for possible action. Before we do that, could I ask you to please take your sign down? Ma'am, could I ask you to please take this sign down? Officer, can we ask someone to? We'll take a brief recess. Yeah, Alex Wilson. Matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0469, please.
Number 0469, order for a hearing regarding barriers to business.
The chair recognizes Counsel Brian Worrell, Chair of the Committee on Small Business and Professional Licenses. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn, and thank you to my co-chair and my co-sponsor, Counselor Mejia, and thank you to central staff for all their hard work. Monday, August 29th, the Small Business and Professional License Committee held a hearing regarding the barriers faced by entrepreneurs when working to establish new businesses in the city of Boston. The hearing was attended by Council President Flynn, the committee's co-chair, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Murphy, and myself. During this hearing, we heard testimony from representatives of the administration, including Chief Shigun Idewu from the Office of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion, Alicia Persena, Director of the Office of Small Business, Elijah Miller, Director of Policy and Research for the Office of Economic and Opportunity and Inclusion, and Daniel Green, Executive Secretary for the Licensing Board. These representatives were joined by a panel of experts and business owners, including Carlos Castillo, a local entrepreneur, Alex Montgomery, a policy associate at the Institute for Justice, Nick Korn of Offsite, and Spencer Watson, Executive Director of the Center for LGBTQ Economic Advancement and Research, also known as CLIR. The administrative representatives shared their ongoing efforts to support small businesses and entrepreneurs, including work done through the Main Streets Program, the early steps in establishing the Legacy Program, and the efforts to build on the success of WeBoss via expansion, including Immigrant Boss and Veteran Boss. Many of their efforts were working to ensure that the administration is working to be proactive rather than reactive, particularly by working with the various Main Street directors. Administrative representatives shared how additional efforts are being made to ensure access is not restricted based on language or access to digital resources. The experience with local business owners has revealed that finances and access to capital are frequently barriers to establishing and expanding businesses throughout the city, where they express interest in working to fix issues with capital holders rather than those who are seeking loans. Our panel of experts and business owners was able to expand on this issue raised by the administration. Key concerns shared were issues relating to cost, delays, and complexity of the current process. Across the board, representatives consistently highlighted that new business owners do not know what they need or even what questions to ask until they are directly facing issues. Mr. Castillo cited luck as the primary thing that got him through the process, stating any business that is open is a miracle. He learned that departments often do not communicate effectively, and that Google was only as effective at the questions one knew to ask. All too often, future business owners are told that they will be given assistance to get through the complex process, but little has been done to make the process itself cheaper, faster, and simpler. Mr. Korn shared quotations from interviews that reinforced Mr. Castillo's experiences. Restaurant owners in the city said, "The process is terrifying. It's like a casino, and the city is the house." And that it seems that Boston doesn't want you to open. Spencer Watson of CLIR indicated that many of the heaviest burdens fall upon people from marginalized communities, particularly members of the Black and Brown communities, women and members of the LGBTQ community, especially trans people. These communities are often subject to overpolicing and low access to legal and financial products necessary to navigate the current process. These difficulties are heightened for those who have previously or are currently experiencing housing insecurity. Members of these communities are equally likely to seek help but are significantly less likely to get it. Mr. Montgomery provided some hope. Cities like Washington D.C., Chicago, Miami, Minneapolis have all worked to implement one-stop shops with dedicated departments to facilitate the licensing process. Often outdated needs drive current policy. Moreover, many of these processes were modified to adapt to the pandemic, helping to shed light on unnecessary steps. Going forward, he recommends that the council and the city agencies take ownership over the process and work to reduce fees, eliminate duplicate licenses and steps, and build simple, clear systems while being aware of digital access gaps. A particular note was Stephanie Lewis, who provided public testimony. Ms. Lewis is an aspiring entrepreneur who took time from grieving the loss of her stepbrother to speak, sharing that he too had worked to start a roofing business in the city. She has watched family members consistently struggle and work hard to keep their families secure, and continues to try to work secure and continues to try to work to break the cycle of poverty. She has been, she has been to department after department, giving list after list of resources, yet has not gotten the help that she needs. As she said, "A list of services doesn't cut it." She needs help to be able to find information, find money, find a chance. Her grant application has been pending since February despite multiple visits to City Hall. Ms. Lewis is not alone. Our hearing revealed that these experiences are not just common but nearly universal. Despite the noble efforts of the administrative staff, one fact remains clear: unless someone has the resources to hire professional assistants opening a business in Boston, it's complex at best and all too often proves to be impossible. As Chair, the Small Business and Professional Licensing Committee acts at this issue remaining committee as we continue to work with the administration, experts, small business owners, to identify ways in which we can make the licensing process cheaper, faster, and simpler. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Orell. Thank you, Council Orell. Docket 0469 will remain in committee. motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, can you also reflect the record that Council Mahia is present and Council Fernandez-Anderson is present? We're on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1032, please.
Docket number 1032, Councilor Murphy and Baker offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the cleanliness and safety conditions at Clifford Park.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I'd like to start by thanking Domingo De Rosa, who I know is here today, a community advocate, and for his continued advocacy at the park as a dad neighbor football coach. He knows firsthand the need of Clifford Park, so I do want to recognize you and thank you for being here and always speaking up for your community. The cleanliness and safety conditions of Clifford Park in Roxbury, just one mile from the Mass and Cass neighborhood, has become a public hazard to nearby residents, students, parents, senior citizens, and the general public. In recent years, Clifford Park has become an open drug market and a large gathering space for those who are suffering homelessness, people with substance use disorders, and people dealing with mental issues. Large piles of trash scatter the park due to this activity, and this trash includes drug paraphernalia, needles, feminine products, human feces, glass bottles, and more. Needles hide in the mulch, which makes it impossible to find and remove all of them. This trash is a public safety hazard. One thing we learned from COVID is the value of open space for our health and wellness, especially for our children. This park is critical and the area deserves more and better, not just the neighbors who live there, but the Mason School is right across the street from the park and the teachers and families do not feel safe for the children to use the play structure that's right there across the street because of this. This hearing order is not to start a blame game. I have personally witnessed the hard workers from the Public Works Department, Parks Department, and the Coordinated Response Team clean up the park. When I was there last Saturday, the Sharps team from the state was there also. Clifford Park is a symptom of a larger issue and everyone is suffering, including the businesses, families, kids, residents, and those struggling from substance use disorder. My cleanup this past weekend was to raise awareness, and this hearing order with Councilor Baker will bring the much-needed attention and services to this part of Boston. Thank you, President Flynn.
Thank you, Council Murphy. The chair recognizes Council Baker. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just stand to support the maker here. Clifford Park has been a problem my entire time on this council. There's been decisions made, and the way I believe that we're handling the situation down in Mass and Cass only add to, add to these situations. I'll speak more on it on the, on the next, on the next docket number. But when, when all options are supposed to be on the table, when people are saying all options should be on the table, that means all options should really be on the table. So thank you, Erin, for your work here. Thank you, Domingo, for your work and, and the people that we hear from day in, day out, that are suffering with this, with this issue that's all the way into the South End, all the way into Roxbury, Andrew Square, Edward Everett Square, all our parks are being taken over. So unless we start to do something, we're going to be overrun. Thank you, Erin. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council Baker. Next, Council Lara. Council Lara, you have the floor.
I just want to stand to say that I agree with my colleague's sentiments in pushing to the city to find ways to make public spaces as Clifford Park free of needles. Councilor Baker's constituents have been screaming into the void for months, if not years, about the conditions of Clifford Park, and I think that our slow response to that work is a responsibility that, according to the community, lies on all of the councilors, including myself, and I'm very happy to take on that responsibility. I heard this weekend that an officer who was supporting a cleanup was injured, and on behalf of myself in my office, I really want to hope that he recovers quickly and wish that officer well. And I'm sorry to the constituents of District 3 that it took a cop getting pricked in the needle for your councilors to be responsive to your cries. As a former street worker, I've seen firsthand what happens when we ignore systemic problems and the impact that they can have on neighborhoods. I'm excited to be a part of this conversation and in support of any internal and external efforts that we take on to remedy the issue. The idea of a park cleanup has been proposed, and my constituents and I are more than happy to be there to support. I ask, though, that as we look for responses to this crisis, we look to the root causes. We need to find solutions that deal with this issue head-on. We must explore solutions that don't dehumanize people suffering from dung addiction, but also create safe, healthy, livable neighborhoods for the people who live nearby. When we hold this hearing, I want to make sure that we have clinicians, harm reduction specialists, social workers, former users, neighbors, and leaders present. I want us to ensure that the decisions that come out of this hearing involve wraparound services, areas for direct services to prevail, and not allow punitive results for those who need the most help for their representatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lara. Next, I'm going to ask Council Mahia. Council Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my colleagues for bringing this hearing order to the table. I also just want to uplift another amazing advocate who has been out in these streets, Leon Rivera, who actually, who I knew and worked with, trying to organize parents many, 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 many years ago, probably eight or nine. And the fact that here we are still having the conversation when we have continued to just kick the can down the street. And I'm really looking forward to leaning into this conversation in a way that really centers justice in, in the process. So just want to uplift Leon Santiago and his crew for their work in this space and for us to recognize that at the end of the day, this has been 10 years in the making, and here we are, having another conversation about the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mahia. The chair recognizes Council Louis Jean. Council Louis Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I look forward to this hearing that we're going to have on Clifford Park. I want to also uplift those who've been working on this issue, those who are in the House today, those who have sent us messages on social media, emails. My office started really contacting the administration to talk about, to uplift a lot of the advocacy that has been going on about a month ago, talking to administration about what is it that we can do to make sure that Clifford Park, a park that is being used by our public, by our children, has more options to remain clean during the day. And so in those conversations, one of the things that I was uplifting as a structural fix, right, not just, you know, more than just cleaning up the park for one day, what is a structural fix here to the park? One of the things I was uplifted by the advocates, including Leon Rivera and including others here, Domingos, is a structural fix, that we have more permanent cleanup. So I just, you know, in my back-and-forth with the administration, confirmed yesterday with Tania Del Rio, who is the point here, that permanent cleanup has started yesterday. There's going to be permanent stationary cleanup seven times a week, Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM during the weekdays, 3:00 to 5:00 PM, and once during the midday around noon time, right? That's going to be every weekday. And then on the weekends in the morning, and this is through a partnership with the New Market Business Improvement District, which has been at the center of improving the issues that residents, business owners, and, and folks in the area have been uplifting for quite some time. This is not a problem that has just come about yesterday. It's been going on for years and years because we have a confluence of a mental health crisis, a drug addiction crisis, and homelessness. We need to figure out how we house people, how we get them the mental health services that they need, and how we meet people where they are with compassion. And so doing all of that together, together with these stationary cleanups is going to go a long way. So I thank the administration for their work. I think all of the advocacy that has been happening around this. I hope that we can work together to find solutions instead of just barking at each other. It is really important that we work together to solve problems, and I think this is a perfect example. The administration is leaning in, advocates have been leaning in, and we as a city council are now leaning in. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Louis Jean. The chair recognizes Council Fernandez-Anderson. Council Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. I first wanted to acknowledge that my history in work experience in this, I've been, I've worked with the sex industry workers for several years for the Dimic Health Center. Then I worked for Department of Mental Health with dual-diagnosis patients, specifically people that suffer from schizophrenia and drug addiction. Then I went on to working to doing community support programs, which is also with dual-diagnosis patients through Mass Health, and this provides services in-home or community-based. And I've lost at least three clients where, to which I got calls in the middle of the night, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, that they've passed away. I also did work with the trans resistance movement, where we would go feed people, and I've been working on this since the 90s. So I would be on Blue Hill Ave. I've worked in a combat zone. I've also worked at Mass and Cass doing meal programs in the middle of the night for trans population. And so this is extremely important to me, but first I want to say that I want to publicly apologize to my brother in service because I know that we went to school, and I love you dearly, Domingos. We had several meetings with advocates and community members, and I've been trying to create this roundtable, and I think in my humanity, I was less impatient and asked him that he yielded his comments because it sounded like he was yelling at me when it was passion. I apologize to you. And I, I think that we don't have the answers. I don't want to point any fingers. I applaud anyone that does picked up, picked up the cup once, or a needle once, or a thousand times. I don't think that we need to point fingers or figure out whether or not it's, we have the answers, or how we have the answers, or who did it or who didn't do it. I think at this point, we should all say it's our district, every single one of us. I think that it's possibly, it may be moved to my district. I hear interest in people moving it to my district, and...
It won't be.
Huh?
It won't be.
Can, Council Fernandez-Anderson has the floor.
If, I think that if it does, I will happily take it on. I will take it on now, even if it's not my district. I will work with you and do whatever I can, but I have to be honest, that I too don't have the answers. But together, I think we can do a lot of work, at least to include the community advocates to figure out where we can start this from scratch. I look forward and thank my council colleagues for filing this. I look forward to the conversation, and God willing, we find a solution.
Thank you, Council Fernandez-Anderson. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Council...
Sign my name.
Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Flaherty, Council Royal, Council Bock, Council Braden, Council Flaherty, Council Lara, Council Louis Jean, Council Mahia, Council Orell. Please add the chair. Docket 1032 will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1033, please.
Docket number 1033, Councilors Murphy and Baker offer the following: Order for a hearing to address the humanitarian crisis at the intersection of Massachusetts Avenue and Melnea, Melnea Cass Boulevard in Section 35 as a treatment option.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. So I'm filing this order with Councilor Baker because I know firsthand since the sudden closure of Long Island Bridge in the fall of 2014, the opioid crisis and homelessness have driven people to that intersection of Massachusetts Avenue and Melnea Cass Boulevard, which many of us refer to Mass and Cass, where those battling substance use disorder can seek methadone treatment or a bed at a city-run shelter. We've seen since 2014, the crowds there have been increasing, and the nicer weather catalyzed many of these people with substance use disorders to return to the area. The tents were removed, but anyone who drives by, which I do every day, hundreds of people are still there on that street, staying under large tarps or umbrellas to protect themselves from the weather day and night. Mayor Wu, the Boston Public Health Commission, and the Coordinated Response Team announced at the beginning of the summer the Warm Weather Program. This plan involved directing more healthcare workers and police officers to the intersection of Mass and Cass, helping guide people to support services and housing options, and arresting those engaging in drug-dealing prostitution and violent crime. We know that many women and men are being sex trafficked in the area, being raped within the structures, if they're tents or tarps, and the violence and illegal activity still continues to plague this area. Earlier this month, Boston Police, working with the Suffolk District's Attorney Office, conducted an undercover operation that resulted in the arrest of 13 men charged with soliciting sex. This is a humanitarian crisis with an open-air drug market, a gathering spot for people who are suffering but shooting up in public, there's piles of trash, and I also work closely with Jen Tracy from the Office of Recovery Services and Tania Del Rio, who is a good friend, who has taken over the recovery services down there. And I know Sue Sullivan from the Bid Team has wonderful workers who come out, and we are getting more money and support so there are more workers helping clean up the area. But if you drive through at 6:00 AM, there's piles of trash, there may be people sweeping and picking up, but by noon, there'll be more piles of trash there. We know that we have a rat problem in the city of Boston. There are rats there. We have monkey pox. We have COVID. We have pregnant women who are falling into the street. We have people who are in need of help. I drove by two weekends ago, going over the bridge near the Target, and I had to get out of the car to narc in a woman who was almost dead on the ground. The EMS and the fire came. She didn't, once she came through, thank goodness, didn't want support, which I couldn't force on her, I know, but she walked back down the area. She was younger than my daughter. It's just heartbreaking for not just those suffering, the family members who I know go down, hopefully with a friend to find some of their loved ones, the business owners. I see a lot of times, there's a noodle store where older Asian women work, and they're walking through that crowd early in the morning when it's dark. It's not safe. It's not good, and we need to do better. I believe there has to be a balance between law enforcement and recovery initiatives. Anyone who knows me know that I care deeply about those suffering from mental health and recovery needs. I'm not saying and never would or believe that we can arrest our way out of this. I'm not here to say that I have a better plan than anyone else, or I can do this better, or I want somebody to put me out on social media and say I'm better. I'm just here to be one of 13 whose responsibility it is to make this city better. I'll keep showing up like I do. I'll keep offering to my colleagues, "Help me, work with me. Let's help this city." Mass and Cass is not just in that area. I had a loved one on Long Island in October of 2014. I can tell you what day of the week it was, what day of the month it was, when he was put in a cab and taken off of Long Island. He was in a detox. He didn't get to stay in recovery. Hundreds of people that night went back out onto the streets and they died. Their family members weren't as lucky as I was. Back then, I didn't even know I was going to say this, but I just remembered that back then, I made a phone call. I got my city councilor's phone number. I called him. He answered. "That's Frank Baker." He connected me... He connected me to John McGann. My loved one got into recovery. It worked. He wasn't on the right path. Will it work for everybody? No, it won't. Are there people down there in Edward Everett Square, in Andrew Square, on .app, not ready for recovery? Absolutely. We don't give up on them, but we have to offer them all options. Not offering them options like this, many times, they don't know better. As a mother, I know. As a teacher, I know. As a human who cares about others, I know. Sometimes you need someone to step into your life and guide you to a better place. And I'm here to say that I would love to have this hearing. I hope my colleagues show up, not just sign on. I hope we work together, and I hope we can offer Section 35s and talk about every other option there is out there. We need to put everything we have, we need to use every tool in our toolbox, and we need to set aside our feelings to know that if we save one, if we save 10, if we save however many, that we have to do better for the neighbors, for the business owners, for us, for our city. So, thank you, Council Flynn.
Thank you, Council Murphy. The chair recognizes Council Baker. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you again, Erin, for this. Just, just for the record, the bid that we were talking about, the seven cleanups, seven days a week, that started in the District 3 office. The, the needles team, the shops team, that we all talk about all the time, that started in the District 3 office. The stands that were down there, the encampments that were down there, the mess that it was years ago, those all got taken care of by the District 3 office. Me, I handled it. Roll your eyes. I handled it.
Excuse me. No, no comments from my, my, from the galley, and from, and from my colleagues, please.
And we also had a fully big public-private partnership with a fully-designed new Clifford Park, but the, but the, the fit between the private partnership wasn't right for the neighborhood, so we walked away from that. That's what the District 3 council did there, and my people voted me in. With that being said, we talked earlier about all options being on the table. Well, Section 35 is on, on the table. There's a saying in AA, "If nothing changes, nothing changes." So we take people from the tents and we put them in the Roundhouse, at an expense, for you, the taxpayers, 15, 20 million bucks, is what we're spending at, at just the Roundhouse, 15, 20 million bucks. That 20 million, that 30 million, whatever it is, if we can get an answer, should be spent on real beds, run by DPH over at Nashua Street, because when someone gets healthy, if their first step is out on Mass and Cass, guess what? They don't have a prayer. They don't have a chance. So Nashua Street would become a decentralized...
Excuse me. No comments from the galley, please.
I'm not worried about them, Mr. President.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Council Baker, please continue. I'm just, I'm just asking, the galley, please don't interrupt my colleagues. The chair recognizes Council Baker.
So I'm just saying, if all options are on the table, all options need to be on the table. Intervention, treatment, diversion. The only people in my life, and I've had heroin in my life for years, I buried a brother 30 years ago. 30 years ago, March 3rd, my brother Ricky died, heroin overdose. It's been in my family. I know what the addict does. And if we don't start doing things different, all of our parks are going to be taken over, all of our streets are going to be taken over, and we're going to meet them where they're at. They're in the parks. They're in the playgrounds. They're using our parks and playgrounds for their toilets. So until something changes, nothing's going to change. Erin, thank you for your bravery on this one. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Baker. The chair recognizes Council Lara. Council Lara, you have the floor.
I would like to sign my name. I don't have any comments. I just want the makers to clarify for the record what Section 35 is.
The chair, thank you, Council Lara. The chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, there's a question on the floor. Can you explain Section 35 for us, please?
I could. And why, could I ask Council Lara why she's asking for that clarification? It will be spoken at at the hearing.
Excuse me. Only one person can speak at a time. Council Murphy, can you, can you explain the, the Section 35 process?
It's when you can bring a loved one or those struggling to a court, and they intervene, and there's a time that they can spend in detox. Many times in the state of Massachusetts, in the city of Boston, they do not spend the full amount of time...
Excuse me. The people in the galley, please don't interrupt us, please.
We're hoping...
The chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy?
I think I finished. It's when you can go to the court and they...
The chair recognizes Council Louie Jean. Council Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Section 35, and I acknowledge the experience of my colleagues, but Section 35 is an extreme, is an extreme reaction that is allowed under Massachusetts law to involuntarily commit someone who hasn't been convicted of a crime, right? So it's taking away their civil liberties and putting them under state confinement when they have not been committed of a crime. And as a result, we have to be very careful, and we need to make sure that it's demonstrated by, by facts and by extreme support in order for us to say that this is even an option on the table, not even talking about expanding Section 35, which is the undertone that I heard. And so I'm deeply concerned about any expansion of the use of Section 35. Yes, it's permissible under the law, but just because something is legal does not make it just. We have a system that is completely unfair.
Excuse me. Please don't interrupt my colleagues. The chair recognizes Council Louie Jean.
I'm fine, I'm fine, Mr. President. And so I just want to make sure that we are not talking about expansion and that we are recognizing the harm that involuntarily, that involuntary commitment does to our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Louie Jean. The, the chair recognizes Council Royal. Council Royal, you have the floor.
I just want to note my opposition to Section 35s in any form. Section 35s, when I was a public defender, led to several overdoses of people who I represented. There's data on this, that Section 35s increased the risk of overdose by almost two to three times. In many cases, Section 35s can operate as death sentences or a death row sentence. And so what we are really talking about is forced involuntary detox. It's a, sometimes, when I was representing folks, what would end up happening is they were promised sort of a health facility, but they were actually sent to a carceral facility. And that is not something that helps people who are in this kind of trauma, in this kind of addiction, struggling with substance use disorder. And so I would hope that we can instead redirect our focus to some of the things that actually Council Baker brought up, which is increasing the supply of beds for people who need rehabilitation treatment, increasing the supply of mental health facility space, which people need. But I would actually state that I believe we should not be using Section 35s, period, in any way, shape, or form on individuals who are living in the city of Boston, moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Royal. The last speaker on this matter will be Council Mahia. Council Mahia, you have the floor.
President, and I also just want to state two things. One is, I also had a loved one who overdosed, and I also have a niece right now who's out in these streets, dealing with her own issues. And who am I, right? To say that I have any right to force her into any type of environment that she's not ready to go into. We always talk about the criminal justice system. Well, there is no justice in the way we're moving in this space if we are imposing our own beliefs on others, right? So while I appreciate my colleagues bringing this hearing order into the space, I do not think that it is going to be something that I will be supporting. So I just want to go on the record on that.
Thank you, Council Mahia. Would anyone like to add their name as a, as a sponsor? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty.
Does my head go?
Nope. Please don't interrupt my colleagues. Please add Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, and please add the chair. Document 1033 will be referred to the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery. Let me, let me just stop for a second before we continue. I'm going to ask the public not to speak during this city council hearing. I'm not going to, I'm going to ask you not to disrupt the, this body while we're speaking. I'm also going to ask my colleagues, please don't interrupt each other when someone else Document 1033 will be referred to the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery. We're on to document 1034.
Document number 1034, Councilors Mahia and Coletta offer the following: Order for a hearing on government accountability and transparency around the Clarity Pool closure in Charlestown.
The chair recognizes Council Mahia. Council Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to add Counselor Louie Jean as our third co-sponsor.
Hearing no objection. Council Louie Jean is added as an original co-sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to thank Counselor Coletta, who is unable to be here with us today, for co-sponsoring this document alongside our office. We know that here in the city of Boston, the way we do business, things are always done to us, without us, right? And oftentimes, when we're trying to seek information, it's like playing the Da Vinci Code, trying to crack it and figure out where things went wrong. And so that is why I created a new committee here in the city of Boston, and this committee called, is called Government Accountability Transparency and Accessibility, because when it comes to information, it's drip, drip. We have to wait for it like molasses. When it comes to transparency, you have to clean the mirror five times with Windex just to see clearly. And when it comes to accessibility, you have to wait in line for years before you can get yours. So we're going to change the way we do business, and this is an opportunity with this particular situation that we find ourselves in to do just that. Earlier this year, community members were made aware that the pool in Charlestown would not be accessible to the public just for a few days before it was set to open. And although need for repairs was known, repairs were not made during the off-season, and now it is closed due to safety concerns. And as you all know, this year, we experienced record-breaking heat in Boston. With limited recreational opportunities for families in Charlestown, the closure of this pool was, and still is, unacceptable. The lack of transparency needs to stop. And this, if this continues, to, the way that I see this, and this is what I heard when I went to one of the community meetings, is that this is impacting people who live in BHA, the housing development, right? We want to talk about access to those who have and those who have not. And these are the things that often get done to us. And so I can understand and appreciate that. And I made a commitment in that meeting that we were going to lean into this conversation, because I always talk about all means all. And yes, all does mean all in all spaces and places, even when it is uncomfortable. So with that said, we're hoping that this hearing is going to create an opportunity for us to hold ourselves accountable to the people, and create space for folks to uplift their own voices. And so I just want to thank the Charlestown community for their unrelentless advocacy, because that's what it has been. And thank you for their partnership in, in working alongside us to get us to where, to this point. I look forward to working alongside my colleague, Council Louie Jean and Coletta, to host this hearing, and more importantly, for the people to finally have the answers that they've been dying for, literally. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mahia. The chair recognizes Council Louie Jean. Council Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Mr. President, and I thank Council Mahia for adding me to this. I also thank Council Coletta for her leadership here. Even during the ARPA hearings, Counselor Coletta was trying to fight for ARPA money for the Charlestown community to help support and prevent the closure of this pool. We were not successful at that attempt because we were told that it needed to be through the capital budget. But the residents of Charlestown have been, for years, asking for updates to this pool. And so, you know, it's time for all of the talking to stop. They deserve answers to their questions, and we all know that a pool is more than just a pool. It's a gathering space for community. It's where folks can come together to learn how to swim. I've, I've mentioned this before, my family, I don't know how to swim because growing up, we had a traumatic experience. My sister had a traumatic experience at a, at a pool. But knowing how to swim is an important life skill, and it's a gathering spot for our neighborhoods, where we can stay active and be healthy. And so we are all better off when our BCYF pools are open and inclusive in all neighborhoods, so that no neighborhood feels left out, whether Mattapan or Charlestown, everyone should feel like they belong. So I also look forward to this hearing because it will showcase the vital importance of social spaces, and will also highlight how important it is for us to invest in our public goods. A public pool is a public good. We need to support our public goods with public dollars that we decide collectively are the things that matter. And so I look forward to this hearing on this pool. I mean, it is so unfortunate that it has taken incredible advocacy on behalf of this community for us to have this conversation, but I'm glad that it's finally happening, and I'm glad that I'm working with my fellow at-large city councillor and the district councillor to address these issues, again, working in partnership to solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Louie Jean. The chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I'd like to add my name and thank the makers of this hearing order. I, there's so many, so many things that I can say about this across the board, across the city, especially in Black and Brown communities. I've gotten so many calls from pools outside of my district, as well as inside my district, that get closed. I think overall, the system is completely broken. The website will say one thing. I will send that off to constituents, and then they're literally outside of facilities to learn that places are closed, especially when there are heat emergencies. Families will travel on a bus or walk to the facilities to find it closed. So overall, I think, of course, I support the reopening of this pool, and also look forward to talking about how to make it all feasible, but making this racially equitable as well. We know that especially Black and Brown boys, children die most of not learning how to swim or lack of these resources. So I look forward to the conversation, and I thank you for filing it.
Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Council Lara. Council Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you. I would just like to add my name, and I want to thank the makers for putting this forth. A couple of months ago, Counselor Flynn and I put together a hearing order to talk about increasing access, not only to pools, but increasing access to water swimming and safety for young people in, specifically young people of color and children with disabilities. This is an issue that's really important to me because I'm a parent of, of a disabled child, a parent with a child who's autistic. And not only are Black and Brown children more prone to drowning, Black and Brown children who have special needs are also at much, much higher risk. And we cannot make safety swimming lessons available if we don't have the infrastructure to make those places available. There are so many pools across the city that are closed, so many that are in need of, of repair and in disarray, and I think that the people of the city of Boston deserve the best possible infrastructure so that we can provide the best possible programming for them. And so I'm really excited to sign my name to this. I'm excited to continue the conversation, and I look forward to President Flynn and I hosting our hearing on increasing access to safety.
Thank you, Council Lara, and I just wanted to echo what all of my colleagues stated about swimming, water safety, the critical role swimming lessons play in our society. We're surrounded by the ocean, and the high population, the high percentage of drownings in the city are children of color and students with disabilities as well. So we need to do more to make sure that we fix every single pool in the city, but as importantly, we need to make sure we provide every kid in Boston access to swimming lessons. The Boston Public School System is working with the YMCA on a program, but we need to expand it. And in my opinion, every kid in the city of Boston should be guaranteed swimming lessons because it's a critical issue. It's a life and death issue. I want to say thank you to my colleagues for their important work on this issue. Would anyone else like to speak? Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Bock, Counselor Royal, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Lara, Council Louie Jean, Council Murphy, Council Rell. Please add the chair. Please add the Chair. I'm sorry. Please add Counselor Braden. Originally, I was going to refer this to the strong women, families and communities, but after listening to my colleague, Counselor Mejia, I'm going to assign it to Government Accountability, Transparency and Accessibility. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1035, please.
Docket number 1035, Counselor Baker offered the following: Order requesting certain information under Section 17F relative to documents related to any investigation of Ricardo Arroyo while preserving the victim's privacy.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And before I call on Counselor Baker, this will be my fourth time that I'll be repeating, asking my colleagues to treat each other with respect, and asking people in the galley to be respectful and not to interrupt anybody. I'm going to ask it for a fifth time. Please don't do that. The Chair recognizes Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, quick point of interest, I believe, that only the maker is allowed to speak on a 17F. I'm not sure if you have that rule there, or, and I believe it's your discretion. Let me take a quick recess.
We're back in session. The Chair recognizes Counselor Baker. Only Counselor Baker will speak on this. Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As elected officials, the public has put their trust in our words and our actions. Any violation of their trust, certainly allegations of sexual assault must be investigated. We owe that to the survivors, at the very least. As the Dean of this delegation, I take our commitment and my commitment as a city councilor very seriously. The allegations before us of a person that is sitting on this council right now are serious at the least, very serious at the least. We must take action to review and address these grave allegations against a sitting Boston City Council. The point of a 17F is not meant to penalize or demean anyone. It is one of the most powerful tools the council has in its purview. No other legislative party has this option. The truth's in the details. This filing will allow us to obtain the necessary information required in order for us, this body, to make an informed decision. The decision to file a 17F to release the records did not come lightly or without repercussions for my family and me. I was not confident that there would be a swift action plan. The gravity of these elections calls for swift and deliberate action. So while knowing this would bring harassment and scrutiny into our lives, the lives of my family, I stand before you assured in my decision to place the survivors first, prioritize the integrity of this body, and quite honestly, follow my moral compass. No matter the outcome, my conscience is good with this decision. I do want to point out, though, there was never a need for the District 6 Council to file a 17F on me. That was done purely as an act of retaliation in an effort to deflect and divert attention from the sexual assault allegations made against a city councilor on this body. I've been truthful and transparent from the beginning. Prior to my being elected, to my first term 12 years ago, the public knew of my past experiences. I've always been upfront about the paths I took, the lessons I've learned, and the changes I've made. In short, there's nothing new to be learned here, and this is on the 17F that's filed after me, almost 30 years later. In fact, the filing only demonstrates the length of desperate groups who go to seek vengeance on a person asking for documents of truth.
Could my, no, no, could my colleagues please not interrupt each other? Counselor Baker, please continue.
Let me be clear. I have made amends along before this day and hold myself accountable.
We'll take a quick recess.
And if that is true, Counselor Baker is using his time to comment on my 17F, which is not allowed.
Counselor Baker, you please talk about yours, and please don't talk about Counselor Lara's.
Distraction from the important work that our actual council, of our actual county doodles, duties. This body who preaches accountability and transparency has a dark shadow cast over it. I employ my council colleagues to acknowledge our moral responsibility for the sake of the sexual assault survivors and the truth to take action. As a result of a brave survivor coming forward, I will withdraw this 17F, Mr. President. However, as things continue to unfold, I'm prepared to file this request again.
Thank you, Counselor Baker.
I want to just end with this. If a predator continues to roam, the killing field only becomes larger. Thank you, Mr. President.
The Chair? Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. I ask, I ask, I ask for no interruptions from people in the galley. I'd like to ask again, please, no interruptions from the galley. And I'd like to ask no comments at all from my council colleagues when another council colleague is speaking. It's rude. Docket, docket, excuse me. Docket 1035 is withdrawn. Docket 0136, please.
Docket number 1036, Counselor Lara, for the following: Order requesting certain information under Section 17F relative to 1905 Center Street and 1911 Center Street.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Lara. Counselor Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. The Keith House in West Roxbury that is formerly located in 1911 Center Street is the former home of William S. Keith. William Keith was born in 1812 and was appointed the postmaster in 1836. The house was built around the time of his appointment. William Keith's tenure as postmaster included the Civil War years, during which the local post office would have processed mail from Union soldiers stationed at nearby Camp Andrew. His tenure at postmaster and his time in this house also included the second half of the 19th century, which saw Boston changing from a merchant city of 200,000 inhabitants to an industrial metropolis of over a million. The house stood on Center Street during Boston's forced-run streetcar time and stayed on Center Street, and is an enduring piece of the era of Boston's streetcar suburbs, when what were once three towns of Roxbury, Dorchester and West Roxbury began to grow into the vibrant neighborhoods of Boston that they are today. On Thursday, August 11th, in 2022, developers demolished the historic Keith House at 1911 Center Street, despite assurances in June of this year from ISD towards our office. ISD informed us that no demolition permit would be issued until the Boston Landmarks Commission process, which was in, which was going to determine if the building would be denoted as a landmark, was finished. At the BLC meeting two days prior, on Tuesday, August 9th, the developer's attorney requested an extension of the BLC's public comment period until August 26th of 2022. Despite the community's rapid response to the city before 8:00 AM on 8/11/22, calls to 311, 911 and ISD, the demolition occurred. However, a stop work order was issued the next day for 1905 Center Street, but we have received no response from the numerous city agencies we have contacted to learn why. Therefore, we request information from the developer and the city on whether a demolition permit was given, what date, and why the Boston Landmarks Commission was not allowed to go through the full process on determining if the site at 1911 Center Street qualified. We'd also like to know if 1905 Center Street is going through the landmark process as it still stands. My office has been working on this issue with the residents of West Roxbury since before I came into office. We have done an incredible amount of work for the last eight months, and so have the people of that neighborhood, to save the Keith House. We have greased every wheel. We have gone through every single process, and we were just at the end of the finish line to make sure that the Keith House was going to be considered a landmark, and we were going to be able to save it. This developer, at every turn, has undermined the process, has disrespected the people of the neighborhood and my office. And now ISD is being completely unresponsive about how and why they were giving a permit to demolish that landmark in West Roxbury. I cannot state in any clearer form how incredibly furious I am. The people of the neighborhood have been working on this for years, and we need answers about why ISD gave this demolition permit to this developer. So we're filing a 17F. We want every single piece of information and communication between the developer and ISD, because we want to know what happened. Now, we know that there's a lot of issues with communications inside of ISD. We know that there are people making decisions that are not checking in with other people. And if it's a systemic issue that we have to deal with, then I want to know what's going on, and our office wants the answers in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselora. Counselora seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1036. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1036 has passed. We're onto docket 1037.
Docket number 1037, Counselor Lara offered the following: Order requesting certain information under Section 17F relative to Counselor Frank Baker.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Lara. Counselor Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. As an abolitionist, it is really hard for me to fathom that we need to look at someone's criminal record, or lack of criminal record, from many years ago to assess whether or not they're fit to serve in public office, or if they're fit to chair committees. In all areas of society, we often use records against people to stigmatize them decades later, even when they're found of no fault.
Excuse me. Whoever has done that, could I ask that, we're in a brief recess. It's disrespectful to interrupt a colleague. Can we, can we please allow Counselor Lara to speak, please? We're back in session. Counselor Lara, you have the floor. Excuse me. Excuse me. Can Counselor Lara, please continue? Excuse me. After the next outburst from anyone else, I'm going to ask this whole body to be cleared from, from all spectators. If I hear one more interruption from either side, everyone's going to leave. The Chair recognizes Counselor Lara. Counselor Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. As an abolitionist, it's really hard for me to fathom that we need to look at someone's criminal record from many years ago, or lack of criminal record, to make decisions on whether or not they're fit to serve in public office or chair their committees. In all areas of society, we often use records against people to stigmatize them decades later, or their lack of records to stigmatize them decades later. Here on this very body, we have counselors who were at some point undocumented, whose mere presence in the United States is deemed an illegal act punishable with arrest. In his own words, Counselor Baker shared that he was a 25-year-old, much different than who he was when he was arrested, and that the public should look at who he is now and not who he was then. I don't disagree. I didn't file this 17F to retaliate, or because I believe Counselor Baker is somehow unfit to serve. That is a decision that should be made by the voters and the city council in a democratic way. I filed it to illustrate something that has become very obvious to me in the last few days, that people of color in this city and on this council are not only held to higher standards, they are also disciplined in harsher ways by leadership. What we know for sure is that none of our colleagues has broken any laws or any council rules during their tenure on the city council. I think that my point has become salient to every single member of the community in the city, which is why, Mr. Clerk, I would like to withdraw my 17F from the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselora. Docket, docket 1037 has been withdrawn. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1038.
As Italian-American heritage day in the city of Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I was going to work on this with Counselor Coletta, but when she's not here now, and we've had more conversations, so I would like to withdraw it for this meeting, and we'll bring it up at a later meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Docket 1038 has been withdrawn. We're onto personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1039.
Docket number 1039, Counselor Flynn for Counselor Fernandez-Anderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1039. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1040.
Docket number 1040, Counselor Flynn for Counselor Fernandez-Anderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1040. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1041.
Docket number 1041, Counselor Flynn for Counselor Worrall.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1041. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1042.
Docket number 1042, Counselor Flynn for Counselor Lara.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1042. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1043.
Docket number 1043, Counselor Flynn offered the following: Order for appointment of temporary employee Ethan Vara in city council.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1043. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. We're moving on to late files. I am informed by the clerk that there are two late file matters. One late file matter is a letter of absence from today from Counselor Coletta. The second one is an order from City Council Braden on redistricting process principles. The late files should now be on everyone's desk. We will now take a vote to add these items into the agenda. All those in favor of adding the late file matters into the agenda, say aye. Thank you. The late file matter has been added into the agenda. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the first late file matter into the agenda, which is a letter from City Council Coletta? a letter from City Council Coletta?
Letter from Councilor Coletta. Dear Council President Flynn, I regret to inform you that I will be absent from our weekly council meeting on August 31st, 2022, due to health-related reasons. Kindly read this letter into the record. Sincerely, Councilor Coletta.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. That letter has been added. Mr. Clerk, can you read the second late file matter into the agenda, which is an order from Council Braden?
Order from Council Liz Braden, order for adoption of City Council redistricting principles. Whereas in the 1981 municipal election, residents of the City of Boston voted 41,973 to 34,623 in favor of a binding referendum changing the structure of the Boston City Council from being elected entirely at large and adding district representation. Whereas historical context led the Massachusetts Legislature Special Joint Committee on Redistricting and the Boston City Council's Committee on Census and Redistricting to facilitate the 2011 and 2012 redistricting process, processes by intentionally prioritizing meaningful engagement of residents from marginalized communities and neighborhoods historically split across district lines, with ample time to scrutinize proposals at dozens of public hearings and committee meetings spanning more than a year. And despite these efforts, the mayor twice disapproved the council maps due to inequitable racial imbalance. Now therefore be it ordered that the City Council adopt the following principles to guide the informed procedures led by the Committee on Redistricting for crafting legally defensible City Council electoral districts for the City of Boston pursuant to Chapter 605 of the Acts of 1982, as amended by Chapter 343 of the Acts of 1986.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President and Mr. Clerk. When committee assignments to our body were announced in January 22, I look forward to getting to work as Vice Chair of the Committee on Redistricting. Redistricting is an immensely important responsibility and a process that has the opportunity to enhance and expand civic participation while strengthening public confidence in our elections and democratic governance. Transparency in redistricting is essential, especially given the City of Boston and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts' history of litigation brought by Boston residents of color against district maps drawn by federal, state, and municipal elected offices. From the very inception of the Boston City Council's shift from being elected entirely at large to the inaugural council districts of 1983, the city's very first map was ruled unconstitutional in the case Latino Political Action Committee versus City of Boston, prompting the city and the state to adopt emergency election procedures for Boston. The second, third, and fourth rounds of City Council redistricting in 1987, 1993, and 2002 were also impacted or delayed amid further litigation based on proposed state or congressional districts. Coalitions of color led by Boston's black community mobilized for equal representation through multiple suits brought by the Black Political Task Force. This historic context led both the State House's Special Joint Committee on Redistricting and the City of Boston's Committee on Census and Redistricting to facilitate a 2011 to 2012 redistricting process that intentionally prioritized meaningful community engagement with direct outreach to communities of color. And in 2011, 2012, the City Council redistricting process lasted more than one year, with dozens of community meetings and public hearings, including those held in neighborhoods across the city. Despite best intentions, even this thorough process produced maps approved by the council that were twice disapproved by the mayor due to inequitable racial imbalances. This shows just how much is at stake. As Vice Chair of the Committee, to my knowledge, there have not been redistricting maps proposed before this body or to the public, to the state. While we are working under a very tight timeline of roughly 60 days, I commit to stewarding a redistricting process to craft a legally defensible redistricting plan that is equitably representative of the City of Boston. I offer this draft order for the council to adopt redistricting principles to guide our process through November 7. I am not seeking suspension and passage today. This is to get the draft order assigned to committee for members to deliberate so that we may steward as thorough and transformative a process as is possible and urgently needed under the given timeline. And I really welcome the participation of all my colleagues in ensuring that we have an equitable and transparent redistricting process for the City of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. The Chair recognizes Council Louie Jean. Council Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just rise to reiterate comments that I've made before on the redistricting process. As an attorney who's worked on a number of redistricting cases that have gone before the Supreme Court, the most salient thing in redistricting is that communities of color are able to elect the candidates of their choice. And too often, political power is used to thwart the desires of communities of color. And so the Supreme Court has actually set out pretty clear principles that we need to use to ensure that communities that are politically cohesive, that are geographically cohesive, that can't elect candidates of their choice, have had that choice thwarted by majority groups, white voters, working to defeat the candidate of their choice. So I want to make sure that we are always centering the ability for communities of color to elect the candidate of choice, as the Supreme Court has outlined pretty clearly. We have districts here in this city where that could happen if we are using these principles of redistricting that have been set out, and when we are thinking about building the political power of communities of color. Thank you. I look forward to this hearing as well and discussing the principles that the council has laid out.
Thank you, Council Louie Jean. The Chair recognizes Council Meheer. Council Meheer, you have the floor.
It's always great to have lawyers as colleagues because they know the law. But I just really quickly wanted to just acknowledge that as a result of redistricting, we were able to elect the first woman of color to represent D6 and the first man of color to represent D5, right? And so when we talk about redistricting, there is a lot at stake, and a lot of political behind-the-scenes situations going down to ensure that we continue to do everything in our power as we continue to move through this process, that leadership and representation matters, right? And if we divide up these districts in ways that are going to be more equitable and inclusive, the change of this city council body will be more reflective of the things that we know, and that's more diversity. And that is what is at stake. So as we continue to go through these conversations, it is really important for us to also be super mindful of who is leading those conversations. And so I look forward to the hearing and as always, being a big mouth, as everybody knows me to be, and I will never water myself down to make anyone feel comfortable, right? Because y'all elected me as I am to represent who I am and the people who put me in this seat. So therefore be it that as we move forward with this process, we do so understanding everything that is at stake. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Meheer. The Chair recognizes Council Fernandez-Anderson. Council Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. I'm going to make it really plain, because over the past, I think, month or so, we've all been going through it, and you see all the fights on Twitter, or the media, or the different articles back and forth. And so the community thinks that the council is racially divided. And now I'm going to speak on behalf of my constituents. The community has reported to me, and the majority of community leaders have reported to me in my district, that the white councilors here have somehow figured out a way and taken advantage of an opportunity to take redistricting and give it to a white counselor. The fear is that, and this is, again, reporting out, the fear is that because some people are afraid that their district will change and diversify, like Council Baker's district, that people will run for office and that person will be a person of color. And so everyone is now super afraid that because Counselor Braden, a white woman, has it, that now that this body, because councilors, for example, all the white councilors here stick together, that they will vote or try to move the districts in a way that is not diverse sufficiently to be able to vote in electives of color. We have fought for a very long time. It is 2022. We're going back and forth about allegations, but here, people are not innocent until proven guilty. People are guilty first. People are crucified. People are lynched. Same old tricks, same masters, though. And still, people, now everything's changed, and everybody's upset. Everybody is boiling up. People are calling me and telling me, "Don't say anything. Stay in your lane. Be quiet. Sit down. You will lose your seat. They won't vote for you." Fight! Don't fight! What the fuck do I have to do in this fucking council in order to get respect as a black woman? And I'm going to tell you, I am not afraid of losing the votes! I am not afraid of this seat! I am not afraid of anybody here! This is the message that I got!
Don't forget this country was built with white people, sustained by white people. The presidents who all back in the day were white. If you don't like it, why don't you take your ass back to your shithole with your stupid ass scarf on your head, you ugly fucking hoe?
This is what I get. I get about three or four of them in my office. I have two sons. I've made mistakes, and once I learned it, I corrected immediately because I made a stupid mistake, because I brought people that were loyal to me. I had six staff. As of yesterday, I have four. That is clear for everyone to understand. When I make a mistake, I will be clear. I don't hate you as a white woman. I don't hate you as a white man. I am sick and tired of this body so stupidly racially divided, so afraid, so depraved, people with no faith, because they are afraid of their losing their advancement. They're afraid of bargaining. They're afraid of leveraging. These people have... Oh my God, I can't even call you cowards because desperation deserves mercy! Desperation deserves mercy! We've all hurt each other here. There are allegations for crying out loud. Let the court decide. Fine, you don't agree, you don't like him, I think he's cocky, but I think there's good in him. And until I see proof, I say, let the courts decide. But here's a redistricting. Fine, we give it to a white woman. Can we all get along? Can we get together? Can we love each other now? Can we make sure that black and brown babies don't die? Can we make sure that cops don't kill before people are proven innocent? Can we do that? No, 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 because this body crucifies you first because of allegations. This is not a court. You don't get to crucify people before they're proven guilty. They're innocent until proven guilty. Now, after this, I will look forward to working with you because I have stamina. I believe, as Baldwin said, "What you do, not what you say." Your votes here sometimes are racist. You move sometimes in a way that hurts my people. And then when I get up to stand up and talk, "Oh, all she talks about is black stuff." I am here to represent every single black woman and man that suffers in the community. I am not afraid to not be elected again. God has my back. I am not afraid to not have political asylum or any type of affiliations or connections. I came here, I fear none, no man, but my Lord. I came here to serve people. I came here to love. I came here to grow. But people talk about this racial equity thing. It's all fake. And you do politics, and you hurt each other. And yet, here I am, a five-foot-tall African woman from the projects, and I am here to tell you, if the voters don't vote me back, I am here for my people. The redistricting thing, that's a very sour thing. The whole way that this has been handled, Ed, you know I love you, you know I care about you, but that was wrong. The way this was done was wrong. It's not about believing or not believing. It's about believing in the Constitution and doing the right thing and following the law. And this was not right. Don't be afraid of losing your position. Don't be afraid. A believer does not compromise their advancement with sexuality, with money, with drugs. This world is nothing. We are nothing. This world is only a prison to those who don't believe and those who lead their lives like this, exploiting and pimping our poverty. I'm... Yield my time. I appreciate Council President Flynn. I look forward to rebuilding our relationship. I believe that everyone is redeemable. I look forward to working together with you. Don't come for me, because if you want smoke, you get smoked. I'm not afraid of any of you. I came for my people. Let God will be done.
Thank you, Council Fernandez-Anderson. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Council Murphy, and I'm going to be, I'm going to ask everyone to be brief, less than one minute, please.
Thank you, Council President. I may have been one of your first votes back when we decided who was the council president. I have faith in you. I just would like to say to my council colleague, Liz Braden, I also have faith in you. I'm an at-large city councilor. Redistricting means nothing to me. However you want to cut up the districts, does not make a difference. I represent all 700,000 residents in the City of Boston. Never in my life have I made a decision out of fear. We have spoken together about that. I will continue to represent all of the people of Boston. I will show up to these hearings. We've had one hearing on redistricting in the nine months we've been here. We have 60 days to make this decision. That hearing started one hour late and lasted 20 minutes. We should have been having these hearings a long time ago. So I applaud Councilor Braden for bringing this order to talking about the importance in knowing that myself as a council will show up to all of the hearings and work together like I always do.
Thank you, Council Murphy. The Chair recognizes Council Laura for one minute.
I think that this is, again, highlighting the disparate level of expectation for white leadership and leadership of color here in the council. When President Flynn called me to ask about how I felt about changing redistricting, I was concerned, but he said that redistricting had stalled and that it wasn't moving as fast as he thought, so I went and did my research. And I said, when we did redistricting last 10 years ago, when his predecessor, a white man from South Boston, Councilor Lenahan, was the chair, not only did he have 18, 19 months to produce the maps, by this time, after almost 10 months of work, he had only held six hearings. Councilor Arroyo, as the chair of the Redistricting Committee, has already held four, not one, which actually looks like he was outpacing Councilor Lenahan. But of course, we're going to, you know, hold Councilor Arroyo to a different standard than everybody else. The facts speak for themselves. on this council. I have to show up to events in my district with security because of the death threat that comes to me. Every day, I get an email that calls me a nigger whore in my inbox. And that, that was a result of an attack that was mounted up by Counselor Erin Murphy's sister, Dara Murphy."
Excuse me. Can we not get families involved here? Counsel, Counsel Lara, can you, can you finish up, please?
Absolutely.
Can you finish up, please?
Absolutely, President Flynn. I can finish up. Thank you so much. Well, President Flynn, I went, excuse me. Thank you so much, y'all. I really appreciate if we could...
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Can you please not interrupt my colleague, whoever's, whoever's speaking?
Thank you, President Flynn. I really want to finish up so I can stay to the minute that you gave me. I went through the proper channels. I spoke to President Flynn. I said, "President Flynn, I am under attack. I'm a single mother of a six-year-old kid. I have no idea what to do. Can you please ask Counselor Murphy to either speak to her sister or publicly condemn the racist, volatile attacks against the counselors of color?" And President Flynn, rightfully so, spoke to Counselor Murphy, and Counselor Murphy said she would not.
Thank you, Counsel Lara. The chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. Counsel Mahia, I'm gonna recognize you for one minute.
One minute?
Yes, one minute, Counsel Mahia.
We find out I'm being censored. I don't think so.
One minute, please.
No. You know, I just feel like I walked into this council hearing, meeting today, knowing that all of our laundry was gonna be put out to dry. Because there is so much drama, right, that happens behind the scenes here, right? I've been on this council for two and a half years. I too have experienced racism. We, we already know. And the thing is, is that I recognize that I represent the entire city of Boston, all 700,000 constituents, the ones that like me and the ones that don't. But here's the deal. There's this mentality that people have selective white rage and people pick and choose when and how they're going to use their political bully pulpit.
Excuse me. Can you please not interrupt my colleague, please?
I want to, excuse me!
Can you please not interrupt my colleague? Can you please not interrupt my colleague? Counsel, Counsel Mahia, can you continue?
Yeah, I'm gonna wrap, I'm gonna wrap up.
You have another few seconds.
I want to...
Counsel Mahia, you have another 10 seconds. Please go ahead. I wanna get, I wanna, I wanna get through this.
I wanna thank my co... Now I have 20 seconds, okay?
No, Counsel Mahia, please finish up.
I can't, 'cause I, I can't hear myself.
We're almost done here. We're almost done.
I am not gonna speak until I can hear myself, okay?
Yep. You have 10 seconds. Please finish up, Counsel Mahia.
I just wanna say, thank you, Counselor Anderson. Because like you, I don't care either if I get reelected. Because I'm here for the work, not the politics, right? And people think that because we're of color, we're gonna lead with fear. But what we have to do is show up in this chamber, right, and show up as we are.
Thank, thank you, Counsel Mahia. Thank... What? We're, we're in a pre-france session.
Arrest me. Arrest me.
Arrest me, arrest me.
Move the picture.
You must go.